Good evening and welcome to the June 9th, 2014 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Before we begin, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to comment in the public hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker's card located on the table next to the chamber entrance. Mr. Hesselbeld, then pass them along. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan.
Here.
Caputa, Shildroth, Henke, Pagano.
Item number three, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting and executive session minutes of May 27, 2014? Hearing none, Mr. Shildroth moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any corrections or additions to the work session minutes dated May 22, Hearing none, Mr. Henke moves to approve, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Item number four, Beautiful Home Awards. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to ask the council to join me in front of the deus, in front of the railing here, and then the city clerk will call out the names of the individuals that whose homes have been selected as the Beautiful Home Award for each ward, and then there's also a mayor's choice. I'd like to personally thank each and every one of these homeowners for setting a great example on keeping your property in tip-top shape. It sets a great example for your neighbors and for everyone in the city, and it's because of people like you that we have such a beautiful city. Counsel, please join me in front.
Those are in order, sir. Okay, so Ward 1, winner is 1092 Fernbrook, Donna and Mark Hasselmeyer.
Mr. Hasselmeyer is not able to be here today, they're on vacation, but he contacted me and wanted to pass on his thanks to everybody. He considers this a great honor, and asked that I could bring this to him, and he takes real good care of his property, and we're very pleased to have him in Award 1.
Did you get a photo op when you go to him? Thank you.
Oh, there goes. There it goes. Slow computer. Okay, Ward 2 is 1200 Lindsay, Robert and Debbie Carmack. There you go.
Tim?
You guys, it was a hard pick driving through the neighborhood of Ward 2, but I've known for many years that Bobby's always took care of his property. Anytime I stopped by to see Bob, he was always cutting the grass, trimming the bushes, and Bobby's the kind of guy can chew gum and walk, so he could always talk to me when he was trimming or he was pulling a weed or anything like that. Well, it's really stuck out in my mind, so I thought they deserved it this year.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mayor. Larry Kendrick has one of the most beautiful houses in the city of Florissant. We often comment, we don't know what Larry does during the winter. We figure he vacuums the rugs inside because he's always cutting his grass all the time, and he has a wonderful set of landscaping, and the photo doesn't show that the pond he has on the side yard, but it's truly one of the most beautiful ponds you'll ever see, and he's very deserving of this award.
And thanks for your many years of service on the bench.
Ward 4, 2670 Redcliffe, Brian and Anna Wolf.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wolf, appreciate it. You had a beautiful home there, and there's a lot of beautiful homes around the city, especially in Ward 4, and I appreciate this to keeping your home up, and this is what everybody should take note of, and a lot of the other citizens to keep their homes up and make them all beautiful. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ward 5 is 205 St. Diana, Donald and Gloria Schillermin.
Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. and Mrs. Schillermin, I remember walking and talking to you the first time I ran for council back in '03, and you had a really nice piece of property back then, and it's continued to be a great property in Ward 5. I think I turned in close to nine entries for Ward 5, and yours really stood out, and I just wanted to commend you for keeping up your property for all these years and for making the city of Florissant a beautiful place that it is. Thank you very much.
Ward 6, 435 St. Joseph, Larry and Mary Ann Pubble.
Mr. Henke?
Yes, welcome. As you can see, the Pubbles have set the bar pretty high in Ward 6 for their property. There's a lot of beautiful homes in Ward 6, but I thought it's particularly deserving, and like to come before me and said the same thing, but I think if you set the bar high, you're challenging your neighbors and your neighborhood to keep up with the Pubbles in this case, if you will. Thank you.
And in Ward 7, 9 St. Thomas, Phil and Pat Scaglioni.
Mr. Pagano?
Yes, well, I nominated, I believe, 35 homes, so, and I know the Scaglioni's have been on my list two years in a row. I do not vote, I just nominate, so congratulations, well deserved.
I'm going to have to say a few words, but Pat's been a dedicated person to the city of Florissant for so long in so many ways, and just thank you for continuing to serve Florissant.
And for Ward 8, 2565 Greenberry, Dorothy and Steve Padri.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. Another one of our beautiful homes in the city of Florissant. Again, Ward 8 has many, many beautiful homes, but this one especially is always, always very nice. I enjoy walking the neighborhood, and this is always one of the pleasures to walk by, so, thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
I see that Mrs. Gilbert is not here this evening. She always maintains her home in very high quality. She's right at the entrance going to Paddock Estates, and there's a lot of, like I said, a lot of nice homes in Paddock Estates and throughout Ward 9 as well as the city of Florissant, but she does a great job of maintaining her home, and also the island to the left of her home, there's an island that she maintains as well to the entrance to Paddock, back to the golf course area, those homes back there, but she does a great job, and I, so I'm glad she was nominated, and thank you very much.
Just get a photo opportunity with them. Thanks.
Okay, and last but certainly not least, the mayor's choice, 150 St. Nicholas, Louis and Debbie Campos.
Well, congratulations. And that is in beautiful Ward 7. Jackie, I'm going to let you say it.
Again, one of the nominees, this is wonderful, the Ward 7. It is a beautiful ward, and people are really doing a great job, so thank you for being the example.
I'd just like to congratulate everyone that was chosen, and thanks for helping us keep this city beautiful.
Item number five on the agenda, hearing from citizens. Seeing that there are no speaker cards, we will move along. Item number six, communications. Clerk, please read the communications.
Email dated May 22, 2014, from John Engelmeier regarding agenda items.
Item number seven, public hearings. There are no public hearings scheduled this evening. Item number eight, old business. Second readings, bill number 8992. I will move for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing special use permit to allow for a sign shop in B3 zoning district for the property located at 8215 North Lindbergh.
I will move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Discussion. Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to allow for a sign shop in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 8215 North Lindbergh.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill number 8992 passes and becomes ordinance number 8048. Bill number 9,000, Mr. Hernandez moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any discussion?
Ordinance to establish a B5 planned commercial district, ordinance to allow for a new retail sales building and a B5 zoning district for the property located at 14070 New Hallsbury Road.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance to establish a B5 planned commercial district, ordinance to allow for a new retail sales building and a B5 zoning district for the property located at 14070 New Hallsbury Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill number 9,000 passes and become ordinance number 8049. Item number nine, new business, board appointments. I would accept the nomination to appoint Ms. Judy Husky to the 1095 Keven, to citizens, reappoint her to Citizens Participation Committee. Moved by Mr. Shildroth, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to reappoint Sue Jakut to the senior commission.
Motion made by Mr. Caputa, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye.
And I'd like to make this very distinguished appointment. This is a committee that does not meet very often, but when they do meet, it's a very important issue. It's the Industrial Development Commission. I would like to appoint Mr. Steve Frank at 1395 St. Michael to this commission.
Motion's made by Mr. Schmidt and seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm sorry, I have one more to the senior commission. I'd like to...
Request. In Ward number nine, we have a request to transfer special use permit number 6231 from Jets Midwest LLC, doing business as Quiznos, to CNMS LLC, DBA Firehouse Subs for the operation of a restaurant located at 2312 North Highway 67. And Mr. Hernandez makes that motion, and that motion is seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Bills for first reading. Bill number 9002.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6231 from Jets Midwest LLC, DBA Quiznos, to CNMS LLC, DBA Firehouse Subs for the operation of a restaurant located at 2312 North Highway 67.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6231 from Jets Midwest LLC, DBA Quiznos, to CNMS LLC, DBA Firehouse Subs for the operation of a restaurant located at 2312 North Highway 67.
Mr. Hernandez moves for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Roll call. Roll call, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6231 from Jets Midwest LLC, DBA Quiznos, to CNMS LLC, DBA Firehouse Subs for the operation of a restaurant located at 2312 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill number 9002 becomes, passes and becomes ordinance number 8050, 8050. Bill number 9003.
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $144,000 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0354, sidewalk repair for the purpose of reducing the backlog of sidewalk repairs.
Bill 9004.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $424,500 from the capital improvement fund to account number 0361, capital additions for the vehicle replacement for the public works department.
9005, bill number 9005.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $60,000 from account number 4839, license no removal to account number 4810, salaries for overtime for the public works department.
Bill number 9006.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4839, license no removal to account number 4827, gasoline for additional gasoline expenses for the public works department.
Item number 10, council announcements. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, June 21st and 22nd is our next, is the next annual Fesa in Florissant, so it's Hispanic festival, Saturday, Sunday, June 21st and 22nd. Hispanic food, Hispanic music, want a little bit of different culture, please come by. Thanks.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to congratulate the city employees. They had 27 years of service of a safety record. That's quite an accomplishment, working 27 years and not getting hurt for the city or a company. And also, I'd like to put a thing out on the vacant homes that we have in the city, and if any of the residents see any suspicious activities on these vacant homes, any cars or whatever, call the police. I mean, if you have any doubt that these people are coming in, I know, I know the weather's getting nice, a lot of these houses are being worked on, and people aren't sure, but so, if you have any doubt of somebody working on a house, or if you just have any kind of suspicion, call the police and let them take care of it. Thank you.
Ms. Pagano?
Well, the much anticipated Ward 5, 7, 8, and 9 barbecue at Donegan Park tomorrow night, at 6 to 8 p.m., Mother Nature may not cooperate well with us, so we will be moving it, in the event of rain, to the James J. Egan ice rink, and I hope everyone is still able to come. We are so looking forward to it. Everything's purchased and everything's ready to go. We just don't need rain, so, thank you.
Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank the greater North County Chamber of Commerce for a fantastic golf tournament on Friday at the Golf Club of Florissant. I can speak really well of two people's play in my Florissant, but two other people's play, I really can't speak highly of. That was just a joke. Okay, I would like to thank the Citizens Participation Committee for the taking care of the Beautiful Home Awards. Every year, they do a great job. I would like to remind everybody, citywide, there is an ordinance against cutting your grass and blowing the clippings into the street or blowing the, cutting your grass into the street. You can get a ticket for that, and it clogs up our sewers, and it's not the right thing to do, so please bag those clippings or mulch them, one of the two. Do not blow them into the street. The St. Louis County Library and Operation Food Search are offering a free lunch to children ages 12 through, excuse me, 2 through 18, Monday through Friday, at the Florissant Valley Branch on Bangard, at Bangard Park at 195 New Florissant Road. No registration is required, and these meals will be available free of charge for, like I said, children ages 2 through 18. I think there's some people out there in our city that probably could take advantage of this, and I ask you to do so. It's a good service by Operation Food Search and the St. Louis County Library. On July 13th, we will be having the 21st Annual Friends of Betty Shildroth Golf Tournament at the Golf Club of Florissant. This is our fifth year there, and we're really excited. July 13th, sir. We've raised over $140,000 for the hospice program at Mercy Hospital for folks who can't afford hospice care. All sponsors are $100, and if you're interested in anything on the tournament, you can get ahold of me at 839-2927. And to clarify, the picnic tomorrow night, if, in the event of rain, we will be at the ice rink at Egan Center. In the event of rain, correct, Ms. Pagano?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lee?
Well, first of all, Mrs. Pagano, I just want to tell you that our two new council people have 100% record on weather, so I don't think you need to worry about rain for tomorrow. Following up on Mr. Shildroth's mention of the Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, every year, the chamber has what we call the Mayor's Challenge, where the mayors for the various cities compete, and our mayor this year came in with his team of Hessel, Lowry, Schmidt, and Schneider. They came in seven under, and they retained the mayor's trophy for this year, so it's back on the wall at the golf course. So, we all had a good time, and I know, I know the mayor was really working hard to keep that home, and I also know Mayor Dorr and Mayor Ferguson were, they, well, who brought the ringer in? Somebody brought a ringer in, but we withheld the challenge, so we had a good time. So, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that home.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm just wanting to say something to all my Ward 2 people out there, that I have contacted MSD about the creek situation. There's four different creeks that run through Ward 2, and about some of our houses that get flooded in their backyards. It's not just one or two houses, there's 25 to 50 of them. I have been in contact with them. They are going to set up a meeting with me. They are going to send somebody out to walk the creeks with me, so we're going to put on our rubber boots, and we're going to make sure we cover all the creek, not just a couple houses of the creek. We got some big trees starting to grow out of them, we got shopping carts in them, we got a lot of stuff restricting the flow. We have, it's, some of it's a mess, but we are in contact with MSD, and I look forward to meeting with them. Thanks.
Mr. Henke?
Ah, yes. Good evening. I would like to echo Jeff, Mr. Caputa's remarks on the vacant houses. We are actively trying to get, compile a list, I'm waiting to cut it in, of all the vacant houses and the contact people, if we can get ahold of the contact people. And I personally am going to try to take a little more proactive approach to these vacant homes, to contact the owners, whether they be a bank or a mortgage company, whoever may own them, and try to take a little more active approach in getting, it's funny that we would have the, not funny, maybe ironic, that we would have the Beautiful Home Awards on a night, and here we're discussing about the vacant homes, which is, for most people, is the opposite of the Beautiful Homes Awards in the neighborhood. So, I just want you to know that not just myself, but the rest of the council is taking a more proactive look at these vacant houses that are in our wards. Thank you.
And on June 12th, we have a big event at the Knights of Columbus Grounds. This has been going on for about a year. I think we have four of them this year. The food trucks are coming to Florissant. Paul Maganelle, who's in the audience tonight, has 18 trucks lined up to come to the Knights of Columbus Grounds this Thursday at 5:00 p.m., June 12th. Be there.
Thank you, Mr. Egan, and with that food truck, please, we're also trying to benefit teams, so please bring some canned goods or some non-perishable food, dry goods, that you could donate, and we'll take those donations at the entrances. We're going to have a barrel and some volunteers, some team to help you with that. And if you don't have any stuff with you, and you want to give them some money, the team could really use the money, and they put it to good use, feeding those that are less fortunate than some of the rest of us. Thank you for mentioning, mentioning the hardware, Mr. Lee. We did retain the hardware. I'm going to glue that plaque to the wall at the golf course, so it never
Show up next year, Matt. And we, we have, speaking of hardware, we've got a really lovely piece of hardware right here. This is the second Muni Award that's coming in the direction of the city of Florissant. The very first Muni Award ever was given to our former Chief of Police, Bill Carabas, for his efforts in getting the emergency responder text thing passed, so we got the, a new emergency system and, in place, that's been built for St. Louis County, and so all the emergency responders can talk with one another, and it was an award well deserved. But this award is also kind of police-related, but also parks-related. You know, we had a little problem in some of our parks with maybe too much loitering and not enough recreation, and we took our parks back. And we did that by hiring two part-time retired full, fully-fledged police officers, but they wanted to sort of maybe scale back just a little bit, but still be, still be very active. These guys have police cars, they have sidearms, they have tasers, they are police officers, and they have helped us take back our parks. Officer Lively and Officer Foster accompanied me to the award ceremony last week, and we accepted this Muni Award. And I was really very pleased and proud of, of Chief Lowry and Parks Director Todd Smith for collaborating to come up with this idea on how us, how we could take back our parks. Not only at our parks, but also our recreation center. You know, sometimes teenagers, they kind of think they own the place a little bit. I happened to be at the weight room at the JFK Center and came out in sweat clothes, so nobody could really recognize me, Officer Lively was there that night, and I was able to observe him incognito, taking care of, just a young man that just needed a little direction, and he was able to get his recreation card and deprive him of the use of it for a week or two, and after that, we had no more problems with that individual. Anyway, he handled himself with firmness and fairness, so I'm really proud of those guys. We already mentioned the food truck night. If we have the flag retirement ceremony on June fourteenth, Saturday, here at City Hall, we're gonna have a flag retirement ceremony with the, all the veterans organizations and Boy Scouts, and the public is invited. Hopefully, we'll have good weather for that, it's a very solemn, moving ceremony, of respect for our flag on Flag Day, and it, by showing respect for the flag, we show respect for the entire nation. There's gonna be, on that same day, there's gonna be something a little bit more lighthearted, Babbling Brooks, Barnes and Butterflies, the Old Town Partners Third Annual Pond Tour, and that's from noon to three, and it begins at the Steve Robbins Building at three-twenty-five Route St. Francis. It's ten dollars, and you can get your tickets from Cordy's Framing, Handels or Dooley's. And so if you would like to see some of the beautiful little, hidden little jewels in Florissant, join us on Saturday. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, for mentioning the Fiesta in Florissant, the Hispanic Festival. As you may know, it's about half the city's been covered, we have a new magazine, it's a place called Florissant, and we're celebrating the seventy-fifth anniversary of the renaming of our city on June twenty-sixth, nineteen thirty-nine. Mayor Bangert signed an ordinance that changed the name to Florissant, which was a nickname that was always used despite the fact that we were incorporated under the name Saint Ferdinand, but the name Florissant persisted, and so they removed the confusion seventy-five years ago, so we have a magazine chock full of information on every single council election, every mayor, every council member, a lot of the state reps, we have, we have remembrances by Tony Brockmire, who happened to be a councilman and a police officer, and he was born in nineteen thirty-nine, and he has a lot of recollections. Some of them are, most of them are accurate, some of them, we've already been told by people that have got this, that it's not accurate, so we'll, we'll have some disclaimers on that. And then on, on June twenty-fifth, the eve of the anniversary, we're gonna gather in front of the old city halls in the six-hundred block of St. Francis Street, in front of Cordy's, is the annual Wednesday night out in June, and so we're gonna have, we're gonna, you know, it's, it's easier to piggyback on somebody else's party than to create your own, so we're gonna piggyback on Old Town Partners on June twenty-fifth at six P.M. in the six-hundred block of St. Francis, in front of the old, old city hall, and then the middle city hall, which is now Buckholz Mortuary. And then the next day, June twenty-sixth, at two P.M. and seven P.M., we're gonna have a town hall meeting for all the residents, and anybody wants to come, we're gonna have one at two P.M. and another one at seven P.M., and it's gonna be in our theater, which has a pretty large capacity, can hold over five hundred people. So, that's what we're gonna be doing to kick off the next seventy-five years. And then June twenty-seventh, shortly thereafter, the emergency responders barbecue at the Knights Grounds on twenty, June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, to benefit Florissant Police and Florissant Valley Fire District and Backstoppers, and it's gonna be Knights of Columbus. And lastly, one hundred years ago today, a guy named Maurice Bud Schneider was born, and he, when he was a young man, he served as a chief petty officer in the United States Navy, and shortly after that, got married and became a father for the first time when I was born, so, happy birthday, Dad.
Thank you, Mayor. Next meeting of the city council will be June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, June twenty-third, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Hernandez moves to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We will take about a ten-minute break, and then we will reconvene for the remainder of the executive session.